Okay, we're logged.
It is, it's a great, it's a great day to be logged.
Okay, it's five thirty, committee meeting. Everybody's here, hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving break. No, since we were unable to conduct business at our last meeting, there's a lot on the agenda. I've got the agendas mail to you, email to you, so we have a lot to do. We have the following, if you have your agenda with you, if you want to mark them. Following agendas need emergency. They are ordinance fifty-two, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one. Also, in the second reading, I think it's forty-seven, forty-seven, we need to give the second reading and then I'll have to have a motion to go to the third reading to pass that, because I think Mark needs to get the information out to the clubs, whoever, whoever needs that.
By the first of the year.
Yeah, by the first of the year, I guess, he has plenty of time to get the mail out. Okay. So this is gonna be kind of hectic. I will remind everyone that you want an ordinance on for next time we need to discuss it. You know, I'm not, when I get an email saying that you need something on the agenda, you know, we agreed not to do that. So I'm getting emails and if you can't come to the committee meeting to discuss it, the meeting before, then it's not going to get on from now on. This is a second or third time it's happened and, you know, we, I don't like passing everything emergency like we have to tonight. I think sometimes these things need to take their, take their course. And tonight we have a lot that needs to be done, emergency, so let's try to do a better job of doing our due diligence and working ahead. Make somebody mad already, Glenn, to call me?
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, we have any other, we have any ordinances for the next meeting? I know that we usually do not, we only have one meeting in December and we're available for emergency meetings. Sherry, I know you're trying to get all your stuff together, you're trying.
I mean, I feel like that with appropriations and transfers, sometimes I, you know, I just don't know, so, you know, those.
Right.
You know, sometimes I have to be.
Yeah, well, I understand that.
Okay.
Those usually are, and you usually tell us when those are coming.
Right, right now, I don't know of any, I feel like we're in good shape, so.
Okay, so we don't have anything for our December meeting?
Not that I know of right now.
Okay, Mayor?
I'm gonna have to look at appointments, I think I have some appointments that may be council approved, may need council approved and I'll try to get that done and like, are you thinking you're gonna have one meeting in December?
At this point, yeah, what is that, December, what is it, fifth? Is that, no, it would be the twelfth.
Okay.
More sense to maybe, if anyone wants to meet on the nineteenth, so maybe that's very little more time.
However, I mean, to me, I will try to work everything out, hopefully.
The third Monday?
I think that's probably the smartest way to do it and that, I mean, kind of. I may need some from them.
I can just say, I mean, I, in years past, have had something come up the last week with insurance, not going with nothing. I think we're setting a really, really good shape there, because our claims have been super low this year, but, yeah.
You guys wanna meet the nineteenth, you wanna change the date to the nineteenth, does that work for everybody?
The nineteenth works for me.
I wanna make sure it works for everyone, you know, because we need to conduct the business. If it's, if we're on a wait till the nineteenth, we need to make sure we have a court.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, we wait till the nineteenth and we don't have a court, then now we're down to have an emergency meetings again.
Hey, there is a, probably our last city health board meeting, I'll see if I can get that moved, but I know that is that night.
That night?
We have to kind of clean everything up, so.
But if you have everything here, I mean, it's not.
It'll either have to be before, after, I can even move that to Tuesday, so however you guys wanna do it.
Nineteenth good?
Yes.
Nineteenth good, Michelle? Been running through the Christmas sales at Dean's?
I have, right, I'm in Mount Vernon that day, so which means I would have to leave at four in order to get here by, at thirty, to get here by five thirty. I can do it, or I can see if I can switch.
You'll be back in town by seven though, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
So if you're late to this, to the committee?
If I'm a little bit late here, if that's, if that works for you, then that would be amazing.
Are you okay?
Yes, I'm good.
You good?
Yes, I would just have to switch some coverage.
I'm good. Glenn, yes?
Law director, I have no plans for the rest of my life.
Okay. Okay, so you have, Mark, you have, excuse me, Mayor, you have no ordinances? Just the appointments that you're thinking?
Yeah, I don't, unless something comes up, I don't see anything, like, big surprises coming up, nothing, nothing at all. I don't think so, you see anything?
Max, you gonna have anything?
Not mine, all.
Certainly pop up, right? And council members, does have anything you wanna look at?
Coming up, or what's on?
Just, just appointments and things, I guess, we'll find out the night of, because it'll be on there. Okay, Sherry, you have anything for us?
No, other than you'll have to accept the, since you didn't have a court, just make sure my October items are accepted in the minutes, but as of now.
Right.
Right now, I don't.
Yep, I've got those on there. Anybody else have anything with the finance questions for Sherry or anything? Everybody was emailed that about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. Thing with the housing, did we take a look at that property on Orange Street? Okay. Anybody else have anything?
I just have a question about ordinance fifty-seven. I know we talked about the custodian, but I don't remember talking about utilities administrative assistant. I don't remember having that discussion. I know we just talked about the.
We just talked about the custodian.
We didn't talk about the other one, but that's on there, on the ordinance.
That was, to my knowledge, just to make kind of streamline our public work, same, same position as kind of the, the utilities position, kind of the same rate of pay, is that right?
So making utilities admin assistant the same as the public works.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I think the public works is considered secretary too, so it's not exact language, the titles are not same, the duties are very similar.
It's non-union.
Yeah, one's union, one's non-union.
And you change the union pay without opening up some type of.
Yeah.
At the time, we did not realize that the curve, what happened. Very similar.
Any update, I guess this would be Max, maybe, on the potential opening of Walnut Street or Fifth Street? And also the house at the corner of South Lawn and Bank Street that we continually bring up, broken windows in the back top of it?
I don't have anything on the South Lawn, but, wow. I believe it's charges pending, I don't think there's been charges served. Can you answer that, Bob? That bank, bank in South Lawn, is there charges there? Are charges brought, they're just not served?
Thank you, I don't know. Something that he brought to me that we get charges on, I can't remember which ones. Do you, can you give me a note with Craig out?
No, Craig, Cramlin.
Cramlin.
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly told you need to do it, I don't know if it's been filed or not.
Great, I believe they were drawn, they just weren't served, to my knowledge. Fifth Street Midstate is working across the street. We've talked to downtown director on possibly relocating since the fruit building is being worked on. There is still work to be done at the Selby, so that's kind of why Fifth Street remains closed. The church, if we can hang on the weather, I told, I told the public works director Shire today to have stop signs ready to open that up, they said seven working days, they should have that street open. But it's bait, I mean, when you have machinery, when you have personnel and you have weather, it, it's closer now than it ever has been.
It should be after six months.
It's, it's getting there, so.
Crane operator recently is what's put in behind.
Right.
Crane operator or crane?
Well, they said crane operator, so.
We need to start goose hunting a little bit.
I'm down there at least twice a week, I don't know what they got done today, just kind of trapped. Right, so it's, it's moving, it's moving. What was your other fifth walnut and house?
Michelle, have you looked at anything else with the housing, that stuff?
I looked over all of the, the videos, it seems really interesting. I did reply that I knew it'd be fun to look at, you know, we should look into it and see what to do, but I don't know what the next steps would be.
So, let me help you on that.
Okay.
Because I don't know what, are you looking at HUD programs, is that what the?
That's what they are, yeah.
So, so the HUD programs, and actually, we had an informative meeting the other day with the Ohio Regional Development Corporation with Mr. Hurdle, and he actually administers the chip in the HUD programs for Chalkton County. So I believe the best avenue to go is for you guys to get with him instead of like chasing something that we might, might already have, just sit down and say, here's, here's what, here's our, yeah. Here's our expectations and what's being done, and he can kind of go.
What's his name?
Dale, Dale Hurdle.
Mr. Hurdle's in Florida this week, he'll be back next.
Yes. It's Ohio Regional Development Corporation, I can get you that info, because I really wanna know, you know, we got a thirty thousand foot view of it. I sign off on, on things, work that's performed at, at different places and they have all the answers to what we're actually getting now. And then maybe we can go into saying, what more can we, you know, what other programs can we participate in? So I think instead of going on a wild goose chase, I think we're close.
I mean, right, well.
So much information.
Like, yeah.
You can't talk right. No, right, right, no, I think that would be a great resource, so I had that wrote down too.
That sounded like one sticking point is rental versus owner.
That's where, that's where you always get caught, is owners, if it's not, if it's not owner occupied, it's very difficult to get any assistance or get anything done with it, so.
Mr. Hurdle knows more about these grant programs than anybody, probably in the state.
Okay.
He would be very cooperative and talk to me.
Okay, and he's out until next week. Thank you.
Utilities, Dave, you have anything, Dave, you got the report?
Yes, I included a couple of pages where we're at on fire hydrants, and we're making, making progress. You know, Dusty's, or, excuse me, fire chief sorted one, twos and threes, ones that are out of service, and that's what we're concentrating on. Continue to keep the crew on those, despite every day. That's probably that, we're starting to see, but I look for the holidays, that's changed. You know, from a overview point, it looks like it's coming down, but I think the holidays are gonna go back up again. Red tags are starting to flatten off, I think the word's getting out that the payment plan is starting to work, people are going to know HOCO more. So I think that message is getting out there, so that's helping that number come down. We try to hold around here for the next couple of months and then hopefully early next year when people start getting their taxes, we get caught back up, but I look back to go back up a little bit.
Jesus bless my office today, it's common was kind of bragging out the amount of work that's been done on the fire hydrants over the last month or so, I believe Chris Arnold.
Talked with Rusty a couple of times, he seems happy that, you know, they're getting fixed, I just, there's an awful lot of threes on here.
Threes will still be insured, it's usable for a fire, so twos and threes can be usable in a fire situation. They may leak a little bit, they may be wet or something like that, that's why we're definitely wanna get the ones out of service first. Three may have a leaking nozzle or something like that, as Russ says, they can still be used by a fire.
Is there a long-term plan in dealing with fire hydrants so that we don't get to the point where we have so many that aren't working? We have a repair or replacement plan that we'll put together?
Yeah, I think that's a good point, I think, you know, going forward is, you know, they flush hydrants twice a year then that once they get done flushing them, we immediately need to jump on a hydrant whenever we know it's out of service. It needs to become our priority right after water breaks, and that's kind of how I'm treating them right now.
Yeah, because you say, you know, you're supposed to exercise those valves and, you know, I assume you're still, you're exercising the valves that you say that you're doing, so the fire hydrants would be the same thing, right?
Right, you know, the fire hydrant, we're working on the valve exercise program, and like you say, the hydrants, after a water break, it's gotta be our second priority.
I think when I took off, there were seventy that were out of, out of service, and I don't know if there, there's some different ones or some that have been on the list too long, so I'm looking forward to getting them addressed.
So anything else, gives an attendance for a break?
Ready?
Have we installed any new water meters lately?
We got fifty-eight last month.
How quick are you getting those out, because you're doing it in quadrants, correct?
We're, we're doing it.
So many?
What we're actually doing, and we're not doing in quadrants, we're really doing in the ones that are still not working or the ones that's causing problem in buildings, we're, we're getting those first. Like, we actually ran a report today on one of our books or routes, it had a hundred and thirty meters in, okay, and I looked at five of them. And I've asked you, actually asked the software company to have a report, because one of them's been estimated since twenty fifteen. This happens, my chance to call about account for some other reason. And, you know, those are the ones we gotta continue to focus on first.
Right.
A lot of it also depends what the supply chains give us, so like last month, we got radios for the pit meters, so we work on pit meters, because that's the material we have.
Anybody else have anything? Mayor, what are you on for us?
A couple million things, so through SPP, actually, Lanny has been helping, Lanny Spaulding's been helping get, obtain liquor permits, it's basically called a community entertainment district and Roscoe BBQ needed a permit, the community entertainment district will be in the confines of the DORA. So we will not be creating a new wheel, we will be using what we have existing. One of the issues, if you wanna start a bar and a restaurant downtown, you cannot obtain a liquor license, liquor licensure is really based upon growing six hundred people at a time and if you're not growing six hundred people at a time, you're not going to get extra licensure. Actually, this idea came to me from Sandusky, when I was in Sandusky. Sandusky grew their entertainment district by investment, kind of what happened at the arena district in Columbus. Instead of, but like with us, Sandusky is not making a two hundred million dollar investment in a district there, you know, based on one building, two building, a restaurant, a, a bar at a time, and what happens is we're hopeful that we go to the state, a lot of this is the DORA process, so I'll propose it to you. I'll propose it to council, then there's a, a public notice that goes out for two weeks, three weeks in a row. Then we can, council can choose to have a public hearing. Whatever that was, council can do a public hearing, which I recommend, just so people can say if, if people wanna know more, they can learn more. SPP has worked with Roscoe BBQ Company to obtain all the necessary paperwork. It's very exciting because it opens up opportunities within the DORA and within the new newly formed community entertainment district once we jump through all the flaming hoops of fire. As you all know, I sent, or Bob Beaumont had sent an email out about property code enforcement officer Jeff Quarter leaving. I wanna thank him for a service to the city and his forty-four years of law enforcement experience. I will work with the sheriff and the sheriff's administration to fill that position that's posted at the sheriff's office now. So we are working to work together to find a, a replacement for that position, we're.
Was it today the last day for that to be up at the sheriff's office?
Yes, I believe so, so we're gonna see, there were some names mentioned, and we are looking for commissioned officers so we don't have to go back to the old way of back and forth and back and forth and take time, so looking forward to that. DAC, the District Advisory Council meeting is tomorrow, and it is the last step to finalize the merger between the city and the county health department. So we will have probably a signing, an official signing of all the paperwork, probably mid-December at some point with the full press release. We'll be glad to get that off my plate. REC, the Recreational Economy for Rural Communities Program, last weekend went well. A lot of, a lot of people in attendance, a lot of excitement, a lot of, you know, I said, opening remarks for me were for the first time in three years, I really felt like every single organization within our community worked together and had some part in. They touched this project in some way, so just thankful for the organizations that are working, working together and getting along and doing this, and when we win, we're all gonna win. It was, it was great to have federal partners in town, we actually have three more calls, three more Zoom meetings. Basically, we'll draft an action plan, we will finalize a full report and then really that leaves a, a lot of room for where do we go for funding? And it's an exciting time, so letters of support have went out for, for Tiffany's project downtown. Tiffany Swagger, the port director, and Lanny Spaulding's project downtown to be in the first round of that was Ohio Builds, now Appalachian Community Grant, so whatever it's called, it's exciting, it's, it's exciting. We also have formed Appalachian Steering Team and our meeting this week and next week kind of go over strategy, see where everyone's at and move forward. Hopefully, everyone gets all their money. Everyone's happy at the end of this, I like to say that there might be people who are not happy, there might be people who don't get everything they want. But when the money's all spent, we all have each other and we all need to say, okay, what's plan B and work from there, so.
It's Lanny's for the Selby.
Selby, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's one of the, at the next meeting, we'll have to do his letter and he'll need a resolution. do his letter and he'll need a resolution passed as well. Right. Doesn't necessarily have to, Tiffany has, hers is put on as, as an ordinance tonight.
Yeah, you're on, yeah, you're on there.
But in speaking with Bob, it can be a resolution, so we'll probably just make it a resolution.
Right. Yeah, so they're both, yeah, you'll have both support. Well, you're on, is Tiffany on tonight? Right, yours, you're on and then Lanny will just, yeah, December ninth is the deadline. So he's going to have to get.
Yeah, because we're not meeting until nineteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it wouldn't have been till the twelfth anyway, so.
I hear, I hear a special meeting. Uh, I, we can figure it out, you know, I don't know. It's going to have to be worked out, so it's something that he's going to have to. Type it up real quick. Lanny, if you're watching, we need your resolution right now. Uh, we'll, we'll figure something out. Yeah, because even if you waited till next meeting, it wouldn't, it would have been the twelfth anyway, so, okay. He's gonna, he's gonna owe all you people a favor, so. Kimball meeting, did you talk to Max about a Kimball meeting and?
Yeah, their date.
No, I don't, are you sending it up? Is Roger sending it up? Who sent it up?
The other day.
Right, okay. I got you. That's what I told you and Bob, the email just came to me, isn't that funny? So I'm not crazy. Uh, and if anyone has any questions at this time, I will answer.
SPP working on anything else?
Uh, they are working on still that OWDA loan with, uh, sewer from here, from a decade ago. Uh, they're also uh, Muskingham Watershed is wanting to do trails in the Will's Creek area. I just sent that over today, mi- mountain biking trail. As well as trying to think, there is, I want to try to, uh, try to maybe work some more funding, uh, for Warsaw. Uh, if there's any, any funding available in the, in the state house. Have them work on some funding. It is, it's lame duck. And I told Senator Hodinger that I knew he wasn't a lame and I knew he wasn't a duck. And he's going to work till the, till the end of the year and actually talked to him today. So he's still working and, and we're still pushing what we need, uh, through him and through Representative Miller and SPP. So yes, I'm sure there's a couple of other things they're working on that I'm.
We haven't called one of them.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be, we'll be on the call Wednesday with them.
Max.
Continue to work on leaves are, uh, leave truck is down right now. The current problem is a lot of repair kits. Uh, but it's not, the repairs not been completed yet. So we brought the old machine out. We're using that right now. Guys assisted, uh, our time getting the new shit signed up. Now, I mean, I don't know if we got them all or not, but. And, uh, was happy today, uh, struggling, you know, when people do street repairs have been out following our ordinance when it comes to utilities. And I remember I seen the big hole in the middle. By woman's street, which maybe said, right by Jay Fisher. But, um, it was filmed today with LSN. So stop and think, I thought maybe some positive reinforcement might go along with them, so. Stop driving by and things like that, so. They were going to top it with old badge, unfortunately that's old stuff for the year. But it's still have to come back in there.
So we're making a little bit of progress there. You said we will have to go back in and, and do it.
Well, either they should, but they don't. I don't know how twenty-one street was bad, right? From having a couple of Jesus meetings, very God, because that's several issues where they not follow the ordinance, so.
Max, as a city, sorry to interrupt, does a city, is it, I can't remember, I think we asked about this, but, um, is the city responsible for cutting around the manholes and the the city does that?
We do that. If we don't do it, it's a godly amount of money, like.
Right.
It's like almost a thousand dollars for a manhole. We come back and do it ourselves.
Right. A lot of times you can put a riser, they just call them a riser, it's just a ring, you put it on, then you put the lid on.
What kind of business do I, on the, um, I do know, like in Roscoe, if if you're walking down, it's, would be on the, uh, let's see here, on the north side, it's like a hole.
Cross, cross from the.
Blacksmith.
Blacksmith shop.
No, it's, it's there's a gap between the curb and the pavement and there's a hole. And you know what's going to happen soon as it starts freezing. Yeah, down by COTC. It's, it's, it's about you, you know.
By the curb?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's on the south end. It's just, uh, it's just to the north side of, uh, COTC. So eventually that's coming up. Like you said, walkers see all that stuff.
That's good, because I mean, you guys are over there every day, so. Just drive a mile, I don't see that stuff.
It's probably about four inches. There's nothing.
Yeah, we have a couple of league states guys who are going to take care of one, so. Apparently we had a slide down on five forty-one. I don't know if you guys remember when we was getting that. It's Mr. Conrad's backyard there, where you get to Hillsdale. And then Steve Johnson's father-in-law. And it was in a private service line. Hillsdale and, uh, with, with, for the new private, oh, I guess it's not a private line, where we put it in, drive that yard up. Apparently that slide or something. Hold that park, so we have a leak there, Dave's guy is going after. And what, uh, we had one up by, on Pass Novelty. And, uh, the, uh, the lot, sixth and cemetery. If we got that one yet or not, that's about, that's about leaking.
We're waiting on inch and quarter parts.
There, yeah. There's time to do stuff, but they have a lot.
We had them four times, we fixed the last time, four months ago, they're still on backward. It's not real bad. It is leaking, it's only about four foot from its drain.
Yeah. But that helps.
That helps.
As soon as we get into this time of year, obviously, it's become much more.
Right, but as soon as those parts pop right on. Uh, five forty-one is actually on the schedule tomorrow.
And then I didn't know, Tom, you want Dave made to go through these ordinances about the funding or? Good on them, Warsaw, New Years.
I read them, I don't.
Everybody's good.
Are we, uh, have we looked at that property up there when, uh, last winter, when, um, Jeff Nyger, the properties come in up there?
We got a lot of work up there.
I.
I was all piped all that in and everything.
Okay.
The one, the one issue that we had is I can't think, can't, I remember these people's names, they got kind of a raised ranch above Nyger's there.
Right.
And they done drainage in their backyard. They have a white pipe, you know, south there that runs continuously. And we was really hoping that we got rid of where the watering trough or spring was, got that all piped in, that would stop. I'm still seeing water coming out of them. So maybe the only thing we can do is actually put a catch basin there and run water flow and take it over to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're taking air.
I was and said you could use the side of their house.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I, I, I think.
Didn't you say, you had an engineer come?
Yeah, we, we actually, uh, brought a gentleman through for, it's called Amler Funding. And there's, we didn't receive any funding from that at all.
Well, we should have spent forty minutes and had even touched, broke the surface. The traction service. Yeah, so he'd seen enough.
A lot of that funding is making, uh, commercial property viable more than fixing resident, even if you wanted to develop a new residential neighborhood, they still would be like, uh, okay. They want a million square foot warehouse put somewhere. If really, I think by the viability, that's what they're looking for is the, is the, yes, job creation and total overall investment. Right, it's capital, right, so. Right.
Housing is such a crisis, but.
Right.
That's a continuous process.
Probably the best project we had as part of that was up, and it's not in the city limits, it's up on Spiller Hill. Uh, fill in that deep line with routes where you actually build up on top of that hill.
So what is that, like an eight hundred foot deep mine?
It's, it's pretty deep. It's got a lot of stringers out probably according to the map. One, one thing I think will help, not just like on the Nyger situation, but other places in town. As we get into where we have that stormwater utility starts bringing funds, where we can actually contract some of those jobs. Just even eight or ten street, yeah, it's a good job. We've been great, but that tire guy's up for almost three weeks. Is that do that for a living normally, so. The people's got the big equipment, everything you can get in there and get out, just like dirt dog get on eight to nine, so. That would give us some funds to take care of a lot of those type of issues, so.
Well, I have a question on, on this Warsaw project. Is there, what happens if they can't pay?
As I expressed several times, they passed a resolution agreeing to basically do that. A resolution means absolutely nothing. We could force them to pass an ordinance to basically agree to indemnify us. That would give me some peace of mind, as I also expressed. What's Warsaw have, and they failed to have done.
Correct.
Anaxion. It's a project that gives me worry, but it's not really my job to vote on this, obviously. Certainly, I would, if I had my preference, they would have raised the rates on their customers a while ago. So that when we come in and do this project and our rates go way up, then you don't have people objecting and refusing to go on and drilling their own wells and whatever fallout's going to be. And plus, they would have had some money to basically contribute towards this project. But they've done none of that.
One thing we would like, we have a meeting Wednesday, Wednesday. Like their solicitor, I guess, or, or.
Or project lead or mayor, council.
Uh, we would like to see an ordinance, then pass ordinance where it's illegal to drill a well in the city of Warsaw. If they don't already have some, something like that on the books. But those people cannot drill their own personal wells. At that point, they have to have water one way or the other, so.
So if we're supplying the water, are we looking at annexing anything? So only way we're going to grow. We're not going to grow by sitting here supplying water to everybody. My opinion, I don't know. I have no voting rights, so.
The other thing that Max and I talked about, you know, Bob's got a valid concern, is we'd like to get and set up a meeting with him and shovel off that.
Don't shovel off.
What other options we have. I know the county, when they did the sanitary sewer project in Fresno, those residents also didn't want to pay. So what the county did, they continued to bill them when it reached a certain amount, they put it on their taxes. You know, that may help us a little bit, see if we can do that, because they can't drill well in the village of Warsaw. You know, that gives us some leverage, start adding it to their taxes, and that's what the county does. And when we do the billing for West Lafayette, there's actually eight or nine that still refuse to pay that. Every sauce in West Lafayette will put it on their taxes. They get paid and they bill it up again, so on their taxes. Build it up again and put it on their taxes. And what I've actually had conversations with Mike Baker about just what Bob talked about is we're going to push that at this meeting the same way as, you need to start raising your rates now. You know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a huge spread from now till
Right.
we take over, but i- if they don't pay us, they're going to pay even more. Creating their own system, which they can't create because they can't drill wells because the water is contaminated, so.
And there's something already in our ordinance dealing with expansion in water that deals with annexation. That we never followed.
Right.
With the West Lafayette project.
Well, I mean, if, if you want to do annexation through, through infrastructure, you're going to have to run sewer too. So, I mean, I, I mean, I think that's a conversation, that's a more in-depth conversation. I don't disagree with it, but I think that's a I don't think, I mean, we can run a line and say it's ours, but, uh, you know, there's a lot more that goes into it.
I know, I just think, you know, we have something already on the books. We need to look at it, see what we need to do or what we can do. So that we do benefit somewhat.
Something about not paying. Something about not paying.
Thinking that was expansion and they had a year to agree to. Some type of.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we need to annex Warsaw, but.
The signing of this ordinance agrees to this loan. Where the money starts coming to us and our obligation to repay, I mean, i- is this a?
Yeah, once, once we do this tonight.
Or is this basically me more in this?
There's two, uh, ordinances on. One is just trying to secure and firm up the, we call me-dollar grant for engineers. We haven't spent a dime of that money and sign this is just the next step in that process. We haven't spent any of this money. The other ordinance is just overriding this to go after the design engineering loan, which was what Warsaw passed. And I think the last number for Ronnie was what, four hundred thousand for the design engineering was a fifty percent principal forgiveness?
Yes.
That is just to firm that up, that, the way of things. And he hasn't really spent any of that money yet. Uh, so, haven't really spent any significant funds yet.
We can.
After the rest of the funding. We've got engineering stations kind of under the gun because you got to have that completed by, it's either March fifteenth or March thirty.
Early in March sometime.
For the submission to the high EPA to get, that's where the big bucks come from. And you won't find out if you got that till sometime, well, it's late this year, going late September, July, I want to find that out.
That's where, you know, we'll see what other opportunities funding are. That's the real big decision. That's where the real money comes in.
Well, I mean, we can look at tax incremental financing as part of that to offset cost, which you're going to basically put the cost to the property owners to pay for it. Uh, you know, there, there's options that, that we can explore. I'm with you. I don't want to step into something. Yeah, I don't, right, I don't, right. Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm still trying to fix.
Right, I mean, this is, I mean, we're sitting here talking about the, we're about ready to go.
Right.
Over our heads and.
I guess my question is, by passing these ordinances, are then the engineers going to go start doing everything? So that we're going to be on the hook for that four hundred thousand of which we're only responsible fifty percent of. And do we have to incur that two hundred thousand dollar expense in order to find out if there's additional monies?
Yeah, yeah, because you're not going to get funded unless you have engineer, right. Right, so I mean the risk. It's kind of one of those things if. You don't get the engineering done, then you're not gonna get any fund. So if you you have to at least dip your toe in the water and get some engineering. To go after funding but that's at that time that's when we can say. No matter what it's engineered. So it's never gonna spoil like it's never you know it's. Is it something that I wanna pay for? Well, it's either pay for it now, pay for it later. But if you don't do the engineering and if we get to the engineering part and we get it done. We don't have to go any further if we say, oh, we can't get funding because I'm not comfortable until we know. We are going to get the funding and this is not going to put us. In the red. I'm not gonna do it. So to me, the the risk we take is engineering which you gotta have anyways.
So the question I would have as taxpayers, that's the risk. What's the reward? If we if this project goes through, how many subscribers are we gonna gain?
Well, the.
You'll gain approximately three hundred and thirty to three hundred and fifty in the village of Warsaw. Plus, you know, the campus at Rearview High School will probably use. Twenty percent what what the uh village uses based on what I see at the other school.
Well, no, I I think the long term. To if you can see over the over Roscoe Hill. The long term is there's some developable ground that you already have infrastructure. I think long, long term, that's where I see. Is you have the Route Thirty Six corridor with viable water. Uh it's kind of one of those things. In my mind, if you build it, they will come. You'll have the infrastructure there. Uh it's flat. The 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 issue with that is it's a lot of flood plain floodway hundred year five hundred year. But there, you know, if something wanted to come here from here to Warsaw. If you wanted to build houses from here to Warsaw. You have wa- you have the hardest part probably done of that project. So that's a long, long term. Short, near term. It's not a grand slam. It's not. It doesn't show. Great promise of. Hey, we should really do this. If we get the funding, then we should really do it. If we don't get the funding, we really shouldn't do it. That's kind of what it comes down to, right? Yeah, we're not going to do it, right? And that's kind of where we're at.
Right. Who's paying the other half?
Uh EPA is willing to forgive that half.
So how much is Warsaw paying for this engineering?
Well, this is as as Bob said, they passed resolutions saying they accept responsibility for that. It's the enforcement of that ordinance, but they've already passed an order saying they accept responsibility for the engineering cost.
Not an ordinance, right?
Yeah, one problem with the funding agencies. Since we're the long-term owner of the infrastructure, we have to buy as well. We tried to get around it. I have a Warsaw pipe for it. That wouldn't fly.
Right, we we have to own it from the beginning. Like, I mean, it's it's our project. So I mean, it's.
Hey, you guys didn't really put up any money. That was all on us. Community block grant had to hear through us so.
What what do you think Tiffany? What do you think long term for the for? Growth of our area, I mean.
Whether it's housing or.
It doesn't. Doesn't have to be.
There's certainly opportunities I would I would really encourage you to reach out to Clara Bone. I'd happily to make that connection again, but she was the OU. Um student um she's working actually she's an employee of OU. And she's the one that did the tip study for us, the tax increment financing study, which then the city creates a chip district. Um that's kind of similar to a jet. And that allows you then to kind of finance ahead of time your infrastructure costs. And then it ends up being assessed on property taxes over time. So. I would certainly say as you're going into these meetings with Warsaw that might be an opportunity to research more. She can do case studies too, so she's done a few case studies for us already.
So when you say tax on the properties, that's their properties? Not the cities.
The primary. Use for this is to grow subdivisions or industrial or commercial like large properties. Um I'm I'm assuming you can utilize it as long as the landowners are agreeable. On existing structures as well. But when we investigated it, it was property first like specific for anywhere from twenty five to forty new houses for subdivision. And so that developer owns the cost associated with the property tax of the infrastructure. And that's paid back over time. Uh we actually presented this to all through school districts as well. Um because they are the ones that kind of in the front of it at first. It actually works out to be pretty favorable for them in the end. Um so I can get that study over to you guys if you'd like to look at it and we can do a case study on Warsaw.
Right. Am I hearing that we've addressed the concerns that we talked about here? Have those been addressed to Warsaw as well?
Yeah.
About drilling wells, raising the rates.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still. Twenty dollars. A month cheaper.
Yes.
But they would have to pay for the line and the water. So they have to try to figure out some way of putting in a good water. And then we also. Schools last week because part of this project is a new water tower up above the farm. We have one farmer who actually owns a school farm. Uh there as well because site there and. So you have something happen with the line, they would have adequate water in the tank until we get a repair and all that so. Rearview schools is very excited about getting water especially since they're playing all the X one basket up there and up at Warsaw with what they're. Doing so.
So what's this do to your manpower in the utilities department? How are you gonna cover all that? You got covering West Lafayette. And then if this goes through, then you gotta cover all the way out there. How do you have enough manpower? You have hard enough time right now. I mean, I'm I'm not being. I just the point is, I mean, we have a hard enough time. We can't keep up with our firefighters.
Yeah, they have basically Ed Roman at their village administrator one part time guy. That's it. They contract their billing out. We would do probably do the billing that they've asked to do that. That's. No additional work. Uh when I look at our work orders to West Lafayette, we probably spend. And there are nine hundred accounts probably. Eight, ten hours a week up there. So if you ratio it out, it's probably one day a week to Warsaw almost or something, right? And that's why part of the project. Is they've identified just like West Lafayette, they had a little bit of substandard four inch. This project fixes everything known before we go up there. So we shouldn't have to go up there that often.
But when we do, which you probably won't be around, somebody's got to cover that.
Yeah.
Manpower wise.
Yeah, we.
So what are we doing? I I mean, I'm thinking long term. What's the plan long term? They got a village administrator and a part-time guy. So what's what's long term? I mean, our budget's only so much.
Right. I would say, you know. When we look at. The additional manpower, it may be. I think a half a man. Uh a week, you know. For both Warsaw and West Lafayette, you know.
They don't run near the pressures that we run here.
Right.
So they don't have near the issues that we have here with.
Like with West Lafayette with their with their system, they average two breaks a year. Two.
Fifty pounds, fifty two pounds.
Two of that, okay.
Has one and a half men that takes care of the streets, the water, the sewer and everything else so.
So if you average one day in West Lafayette and one day in Warsaw. So that's two days a week because Shaktin's not getting what they're supposed to be getting.
But if.
I'm maybe I'm not the smartest guy in the world.
We have to test the water.
Understand that.
I mean, it's not for maintenance. It's gonna grab water samples, make sure.
But there's gonna be problems further down the line when none of us are gonna be here. Can't volunteers do it all.
Hopefully we have a thousand houses out there and.
And I can make a suggestion and I apologize now because I'm gonna say it backwards, but if you lay over a jet. Over this this strength in which the utilities are going to be laid, then you're able to get the two percent income tax, the percentage of that that goes to the general fund. And utilities where that half percent or full percent. Through that jet as they move it through the town.
And then annex it in ten years from that, yeah.
I'd do a jet for three years.
Right, I like it. I mean, that's a starting.
Put language into it that we cannot.
Right, exactly.
And then we would have to create a brand new jet that would have a branch contract to negotiate.
Yeah, and we can negotiate good stuff.
I just I just in the future, I look at West Lafayette. And if we go whatever direction we go next, eventually the city's gonna have to cover. Cover that.
I would hope that the volume covers it. I mean, if we get a large industrial user down there at E P, which would be the next. Direction, I think we would all agree with that we're going.
You and my mom used to say wish in one hand. But we're still waiting.
Right.
We're still waiting on that.
Well, we got sold. That's for any more time.
Well, I just don't wanna get sold on this Warsaw project and end up in the same boat. I don't mind the engineering.
I'm with you. I'm with you on that. I don't like it.
But before we sign on the dotted line. Ten million dollar.
We will not do anything that raises our residents rates. We said that was like that and I'll say here publicly say it was Warsaw.
Okay.
No, we have to. It has to be a smart.
The way we started it, I mean, these places ask for our water obviously. It's how we start that very.
I'm not saying you guys don't know what you're doing. That's not.
No, I'm not saying it that way, but.
Just sometimes I don't think. Well, I we need to think farther into the future than the immediate.
Right.
Right.
Time and as sometimes I don't know that we always do that, any of us for anything that we do. I just. Later on and I you guys know what you're doing. I I'm not.
I'm with you. If it's not viable and we know it's not viable and we're not. But we don't. It's kind of one of those things. We don't know if it's viable. It's gotta get engineered and then and then it's funding and if it's not funded, then we can say.
We've done with Ben Howard shows it's viable with the rates.
Bible, we're making money down the road and we can add a employee that would take care of what West Lafayette and Warsaw.
Yeah.
It wouldn't take away from the guys that were in the city.
I guess that was my question. If we're far enough along in the project. That we have that we know what additional income will be for the water department and I would, like Roger said, that would take care of an additional employee if we need.
We can get you guys Ben Howard's study for.
Tom's point, you know, we've always pitched this to Warsaw. This will be done. No additional cost to the resident city for Shogun. That's where the big fundamental difference in West Lafayette was negotiated before I was on this side. Is they understand they're gonna be paying a significant debt reduction fee and they don't seem to have a problem with that. And that's why one of the topics for our discussion Wednesday is we'd like to see them start putting some of those rate decreases in effect now. And start generating a little bit of money and also show goodwill and intent. You know, it's coming down the road folks, whether you do it without or your own plan. Is start doing those ordinances, doing your free readings. Raise your rates to what our rates are gonna be and what you think the debt reduction fees wanna be. Pass the ordinance where they can't drill wells if they don't have one and they may have one, don't know that answer. They can't drill wells in the village. Cause that forces them to sign on to our the the municipal water system wherever provides it. And it gives us leverage to go after them. Use the county model. They put it on their taxes that they don't pay.
If they refuse to pass that kind of.
My opinion if they see you know are not willing to pass ordinances saying they can't drill wells but not willing to. Or a limited rate increases. This may not be a viable project. Hang on the line.
So.
Will pay a lot more than our.
So I'm passing this ordinance tonight. Then you guys can get started with uh.
Yeah, and like I said, the engineering, the engineering ultimately is an investment. Because you have.
Yeah.
Like you, I mean, it's and. Okay, engineering next year is probably gonna, it's just gonna go up. So regardless, we have. Here it is and then we're not forced to say. We have, th- there's no forcing us to say we have to do it.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just.
That's you're good.
We are getting some questions. The residents on one ninety two, as you remember, we ran a water line up County Route Ten to the new United Church. I think that four or five additional residents hooked up that along K O A, which is a large user. Residents on one ninety two from anywhere that intersection is going west. We had a list of fourteen names come in that would like to have our water. So we're actually look kind of engineering associates look at that to do kind of uh the Hillsdale model. Where they pay for the line. And they can navigate their code on their taxes and pay it upfront. Build. But uh well, we said was we would have. Pretty sure that we got that many residents before we run that line. Yeah, I would envision there's a lot of houses on one ninety two.
Forty four.
Forty four. Yeah. Come across there and back up six twenty one because all those people's waters suck up there. And.
That would take us just to six.
And it would take us to the back of the firehouse, which is being fed off of the two inch line right now off of County Route Ten so. We would have a loop there. There's a lot of building sites and. I'm sure Tiffany would agree summer fields would be an excellent site to. For house. Is we have water and sewer there now.
Anybody else have anything? Have Tiffany here. She emailed me. I'll give you ten minutes.
Um on the table, you have got a couple publications that we've put in special meetings that we had in addition to our updates here. So. Um the first one, Mike, if you don't mind, I'm gonna grab this. Uh is this one and Director Mahalik was here visiting our brownfield site, which will be the new home to the Justice Center. Uh the groundbreaking for that is December fifth. We wanted to be able to put in her hands um the thoughts that Kishak and had regarding potential projects moving forward with the Appalachia Community Grant. So we did uh send her back with that. Director Carrie with the Governor's Office of Appalachia, he also received that. And then the other publication was for the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities. Uh two-day workshop that Mark put together. Uh so we were able to provide them with a list of all of our current assets, but also what we want to do in the future. These two things really coincide well together um as there's a lot of overlap with the Appalachia Community Grant. And Outmore Recreation Downtown Development, um healthcare with a focus on mental health and substance abuse, especially connecting to our youth. So as you look through there, you're gonna see some similarities for sure. Both of these documents will put together in about two days. Uh we had quick turnarounds on those. I would like to see us make it better. Um make it something that we can actually put out to the community because some of the assets that we have in here, we just don't talk about enough. And once you see it and flip through, you realize how blessed we are as a community. So um that is something that we would like to work on in twenty twenty three. Um then the paper that I sent you with, um this is all of our kind of updated work that we are working on currently. Um you know, in addition to our report to general fund, we do manage nine other accounts at the authority. Um our revolving loans fund is one of those. Those funds were secured by the USDA. And we do have required reporting on those and so we currently are in the works of doing that for twenty twenty two, moving into twenty twenty three. Um we we're doing well with all of our R L F funds currently and we also have got two new R L Fs that are in the process. And we look for those to be funded by the end of this year. So we're very excited about that as well. Um it is working. As far as marketing to shocking goes, um we are putting some enhancements on our website. We are including a blog in that. So our social social media outreach will be better. We're gonna use that as an informative tool but also an announcement tool for the board. Uh we're gonna start with bi-weekly blogs, um really to help people kind of understand what economic development is, what the umbrella for these states there. Uh we also are gonna be putting in a new dashboard. So you're gonna be able to go to our website and and we're. Gonna be relying on our companies to do this, but you're gonna get to see the level of investment into shopping happening. Um it is tremendous right now. What we are tracking comes from. Um, it is tremendous right now, and what we are tracking comes from Jobs Ohio and Ohio Southeast. There's a lot of capital investment that we're not tracking. We want our community to be able to see that. We also want new businesses to be able to look at that. And understand this is the place that they want to be. Um, we have the Chalkon Collaborative Website that is gonna be going live this week. That is for pictures. It's full of a virtual tour. You can get on and you can actually see the theater, but it's also gonna talk about the Appalachia work, um, the Work at Appalachia Initiative. Uh, and that's the ordinance that you guys are passing for us tonight. Uh, that is our regional approach to co-working and maker spaces and business incubators that the collaborative will be in. Uh, Zoom Prospector is the site that we currently are using. Um, the state uses that, site selectors use that, and we are updating that continuously. Whether it's with new properties that are coming on, um, it might be the Kansasville Industrial Site as that gets improved and more demos happening there. We're putting updated pictures on that. That is really important because that is how we feel fill our leads. Uh, leads being requests for information from site selectors. They're working for businesses that are looking to update here, so all of our best information is on that Zoom Prospector site for, um, those properties. Um, as workforce continues to be the number one issue for our employers, and it's also the number one issue for new businesses that are looking to relocate. Um, we have started, um, it's a workforce development. That is connecting our community with our local school districts. Um, Kaylee's had the opportunity to be at those meetings. Um, our employers are face to face with our schools, talking about what they need. Um, educators are carrying what they feel are ready workforce. It's going really, really well. Uh, we were going to be at quarterly, and everyone kind of agreed it was going so well that they want to move it to monthly in twenty-three. So in December, our meeting is gonna be at the new Kishakin Genesis Plaza Center. We're gonna be doing a tour there. Um, but in January, it'll be regular monthly meetings, and so we're excited to see how that continues to develop. The Port Press is the publication that we did last year for the first time, and we are going to be doing that again, so that is actually gonna be released within the next few weeks. Um, and that's kind of just a sharing with the community actively from the last year. It's a form of our annual report essentially. Um, I will be attending a brokers networking event on November thirtieth, that's with Ohio Southeast. Uh, the nice thing about that is you're face to face with site selectors and have opportunities to talk about the available properties that we have here. Um, and talk about the shopping as a whole, and how we're preparing for this growth in central, central Ohio. Uh, working with new businesses, uh, so we are rounding out our business industry partnership visits, or what we call our D R M E programs, uh, for twenty twenty-two. Um, that is basically where we sit down with our local businesses, large and small. We talk to them about their business. Uh, we understand then what their strengths are, what maybe they, what markets they would like to get into. We provide some connecting resources there, but it also gives us an opportunity to hear, um, about their challenges, if they have any. And that's really important because as new grant programs are being released. Um, as we have those thoughts in back of our head, we know who to connect them with the new programming, so. Um, I think this month, or this month, this year, we've probably visited over fifty businesses. Um, as far as actual visits, but we also do calls, and then they'll come to our office.
What's some of their obstacles they have to overcome?
Uh, workforce right now is by far the number.
I mean, besides workforce, cause that's everybody.
Logistics is tough right now, so supply chain is a, is a challenge. Um, getting their supplies to them, their raw materials is a challenge. Um, and so we will work with Jobs Ohio Sector Specific Management there to see if we can help overcome some of those challenges. So those are usually our two biggest issues that we.
What are the some good things that are happening for the businesses?
Um. They're growing. I mean, M F M is a great example of that. Um, Genesis sees a market here, so we've got multiple projects that are in the works. Um, one should hopefully be released by the end of this month. McWay Ductile made a very large twenty-two point five million dollar investment this year, and they're higher than fifty. So, um, that's fantastic as well. So our businesses are doing well. They're growing for sure. Um, let's see here, so. Um, we are gonna be hosting a broker's breakfast, uh, business. I'm sorry, oh. Um, we're gonna be doing a banker's breakfast, and that is the purpose for that is so that our lenders, they understand when a business comes to them. And they say, hey, I've got this idea, or I wanna start a business. One, they are sending them to the Port Authority for that additional assistance. Um, but that they understand the program that we have, and if we don't have the programming, the other resources that we have that we can fulfill that. Many times we think that, um, a potential business sits down at the table, and when they hear you've got to have twenty percent to put towards your business. That can be the stop of the conversation. We want to make sure that that's not the case, um, so that they are connected. So this banker's breakfast, we've got Linda Bumgarner from Appalachia. Growth Capital. We've got George Donnelly from Omega is gonna be coming to talk about their revolving loan fund, which is actually much larger than ours. Um, so if I can't fill that need, I can send them there. Um, and then also, we are gonna have the Small Business Development Center. Steve Schilling is gonna be there to present as well. Um, the Port Authority has also been working with the Three for Three Initiative on the C H S Entrepreneur Club. Um, Michelle, you've had an opportunity to present to that club. They're meeting three days a week right now with Mr. Clark. Um, it was fun to see them kind of in action, to explain to them what resources the community had for new businesses. To talk to them about the collaborative and what that's gonna look like in the future, and hopefully be a home for them as well. Um, they are gonna be meeting with Carly Thompson. She's gonna kind of talk to them about, um, kind of almost a serial entrepreneur approach, having multiple businesses, and what that looks like. Um, and so we're excited to see that keep going. Kishakin is gonna participate in a shark tub, um, kind of a play on a shark tank, and that's gonna be a regional. Um, activity that'll be held in April in Cambridge. Uh, we're doing that with TESS, we're doing it with Burnsy, Belmont. Um, multiple Skingham Counties are all participating in that. We actually hope that we'll be able to take the Entrepreneur Club as a part of like a field trip there, so that they can participate. In the voting, the judging for those entrepreneurs, and maybe set the tone for what next year would look like to have our own local one as a feeder to the regional one.
Tiffany, just a quick question on your Workforce Development Council.
Yeah.
Uh, what high schools have been invited to that?
Oh, and all have come.
Is Chalken up to you? School been invited?
Uh, no, I apologize. I will make sure that Sherry knows that, and so, and my apologies, I've shocked the high school.
Kind of get used to it.
I'm sorry. We'll make sure that you're extended that invite. Um. I'm not sure when the next, I don't know if they set the January meeting. I'll call up with you now, Briana. Um, so we are currently regarding land development and use. Um, we have completed due diligence reports on two properties near Kishakin. Those due diligence reports include the phase one environmental, they include the wetland delineation study, and also the threatened and endangered species studies. So these are really key for us to be able to move forward on any type of development there. And, um, that is in hopes to support two existing local businesses that are here, but also, uh, as outside business that's looking to relocate here. Uh, we're also looking at completing a ripple application. That's a rural industrial park loan application. The due diligence is the key. We have to have that before we can apply for the ripple grant. Um, so that's currently being worked on, and we're hoping that we'll have that submitted by the end of this year. Um, we are also finishing up our work with Genesis Drive, so, um, Kishakin has a T I D Transportation Improvement District. That's new to us. Um, here in the community. Um, we did our first application and were awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, from O dot. In two separate fines, and then two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Governor's Office of Appalachia to help offset costs with Genesis Drive. Uh, so the T I D acts as a conduit for those dollars, and we're in the final reporting stages of that now, um, that it's actually been dedicated. So that will be wrapping up soon. Uh, we are currently administering two grants, uh, with O D O D. That's the Ohio Department of Development. That's the Brownfield Remediation and also the Building Demo Rebite Grants. The Brownfield Remediation Grant, that was a one million dollar set aside for Kishakin County. Um, about nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand went towards the steel ceiling site. So that we could finish some injections in the grounds there to make that a viable property for the Justice Center. Uh, the remaining one million dollar, of the one million, went towards, um, updating the phase two on the Edmont site, so that we can take next steps there. Um, it was very outdated and not usable at that point, so now that has been updated. Um, that opened some doors for us, hopefully for some additional funding soon. Um, and then as far as the Brownfield program goes, I'm sorry, the Building Demo Rebite. There's nine properties in Kishakin that are gonna be tore down using those funds. Um, four of those are within city limits. One has already happened and will be reimbursed for that. That's the Hill House. Um, here, but there's three additional city properties that are gonna be tore down. One is located right on South Second Street, and then the other two are now owned by Fire Department and will be raised, so. Um, those bids have been received. They should be awarded actually next week, so we sat down and reviewed those today. Through our work with Ohio University, Omega and Hammond Consulting, uh, the hotel feasibility study is. Um, we've identified some properties of interest there that will be fed into those report. And then that is actually gonna go to utilize some marketing materials that we can get in some hotel chains, um, hands to, and taste them here. And then there's a housing study that's currently in process, so we are excited to see what that results are. It's gonna kind of identify what we currently have, but really what we need as well. That's also gonna be then supporting our T I F study, which is that tax increment financing study. We're gonna be able to light up it too and hopefully make some, some progress there. As far as new project, um, opportunities go, uh, the Appalachia Community Grant, so that is the five hundred million dollars that Governor DeWine has set aside. We formally called that Ohio Builds. Those guidelines came out about a month ago, and it has been fast and furious since. Um, because December ninth is the first round deadline. So, um, those are intended to be shovel-ready projects that are applied for. And round one, uh, those are the two, the Selby Building and then the Collaborative that are going in for that. There are some other round one applications that are going in, but those are larger applicant, um, larger applicants. They impact Kishakin, but Kishakin's not the applicant one of those. And then round two is the remainder of that five hundred million dollars, and that's gonna happen in November of twenty twenty-four. So our intention, at least with the collaborative, is that the front portion of that building is gonna go around one. We're praying that we get funded as a part of our regional application there. We're gonna be able to commence work done, and throughout that year of waiting for round two. We're gonna be doing this preliminary engineering for the theater. So our goal would be then to apply in November twenty-three for the completion of the theater. Um, we've taken every opportunity that we could to invite people into that building, uh, so that they can see it, so that they can write support letters for us. Um, some of our legislators have been through. Um, it's pretty impressive when they get in and what their reaction is, so. We are hoping that, uh, very shortly, we're gonna be able to start working on the theater. Um, two of the other projects that we're kind of working on, um. Actually, I think we've covered it. I think on our new project opportunities, we talked about Appalachia Community Grants. Um. That at working Appalachia, that's a partnership with the City of Athens, the Village of Somerset in Hocking County. Um, so all of us are joining this remote networking, um, kind of, um, program. We're gonna have some consistent services across the board. It's gonna include Ohio's University with that. There'll be a transfer of membership to, to and from each of those places as well. We're continuing to build out that application. Um, and then the technical assistance part, that is also due on December ninth. Our office is kind of acting as a conduit right now for all of those projects. Um, so Google Form was actually made. It was sent out to a lot of our partners. They've completed that, and now there's close to twenty projects that have been sent in for consideration. Um, almost all of those were very much encouraging to go round two, so that we can do some technical assistance and really figure out. The, kind of the cohesiveness of those projects as we move through this next year. Um, that is the meeting that Mark referred to. We are, we're gonna be having this on a very regular basis. Um, because it's a large sum of money that our community has never had before, we want to make sure that we utilize that right. So. Um, that scratches the surface. Um, I always encourage you to call me if you have any questions. Um, if you take this with you and you're looking at something and say, you know, I wanna know more about that, I think each of you have my cell phone number, so please feel free to utilize that. Any questions?
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany.
If I have anything, about ten minutes.
I just know, uh, why Amy felt she wasn't well enough to be at the reading off to all these orders.
Meeting chambers in about nine minutes.
I'm very prepared to, I'm not gonna go to council meetings if there are any questions.
We're having a scheduled Chicago City Council meeting. Remind everybody, we have a lot of legislation to get through, but we were unable to conduct business at our last meeting. Call a order, clerk, please call the roll. Andrew. Park raw.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Missler.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Same for the pledge.
Let's read this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the richest states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, thank you for the opportunity to serve the city. I pray that you could just be with us tonight as we go through this list of resolutions and ordinances. And again, we thank you for getting this opportunity. I pray this may. Amen.
Minutes, council, your email the minutes from the October 24th, 2022 and November 14th, 22 council meetings. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion with seven minutes for both meetings.
One second.
Clerk, please call the roll. Andrew.
Yes.
Park raw.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Public input?
Are we on the agenda or is this our public input?
This is, uh, this is your time to shine. Yeah, I apologize, let's not turn around.
My name is Tom Herring. I live at 222 Chestnut or Arrowhead Street. I am with Frank. Frank and I are both representing the Koshak and Bloom Board. And this is our 10th year competing for the American Bloom Program. Both of you know this program here. This year, we are most proud and we're presenting this to the city, to the city hall here. This is the American Bloom Growing Vibrant Communities Award for 2022. Of Koshakton, Ohio, number one in the 11,000 to 14,000 population category.
So we, Tom didn't get to attend, but I got to attend the symposium in St. Louis. And so we were also recognized for, uh, there are seven criteria of American Bloom. So our highest point category was for our flowers. We got a plaque for recognition of that. And I appreciate that everybody that talks, that came to the wall without people saying thanks for what we do. And then we also got a plaque for our eye popping pots, best use of containers in the landscape. So we recognize that.
And that was the whole population.
So, you know, it's not a one man team. It's a whole board, it's a whole community. And you guys supported us good time this year and helping us with our bring them. So we really appreciate the city's help and we want to present these to both council and mayor.
I want you to have the eye popping pots on. I don't want that sitting anywhere in this building. I don't even want you to have it in municipal court. You to have it at home where you wake up and you see it every day. I swear that that is a one, in the negative world we live in. That is the one positive thing I always hear about Shopkin. And I know it's not all Judge Francis. It's every member of Shopkin Bloom and the community and their buy in. And you know, we can do nothing else. We can grow beautiful flowers here and we've accomplished a lot with just our landscape and the way it looks. And I just want to say thank you. And I know council feels the same way, the community. You know, people from far and near like just enjoy the way that looks. I mean, you drive across the bridge and the first thing you see is flowers and life. And I just appreciate the vibrancy that you guys have added to our community. I've talked so much today, I almost lost my voice. Yeah, I want to picture.
Don't lose your green thumb on Judge France. I'll be the rose between two thorns.
I bet you can get this in the order and then I can give everybody a picture.
Everyone stand up, yeah.
Yeah, you just stand up and then all the councils in the back.
Yeah, you run by the flower sheriff, get up here if you want to. I don't want to break the camera.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. No, keep that because I honestly, the pops, yeah, I love that. Thank you both. We have something to add, the agenda, standing committee reports. Don't break it all, right? Mayor's report, council, your email, the mayor's report for October, about three weeks ago. With the building permits, mayor's statement about the general fund, all those things were on there. Been after today and earlier. Do you have anything to add in the committee meeting?
You know, and talking with Tiffany earlier, the, the things that are going on within our community. I'm going to call them little lip picky items. When, when we have issues that are small, the smallest issues could turn big. Working together as a team with everyone, putting our differences aside, we can get through anything. And if the issues that I faced today with another organization. I don't want to call anything not a big deal, but we can get through anything. And if that's what we're actually facing as a community. I think we're doing a damn good job of being where we're at. And want to tell everyone, have a great, great holiday season. Enjoy each other, love each other, look out for your neighbor and God bless everyone.
Max?
I don't have a lot to report on other than what we discussed at the committee meeting. I would, I'd say it was in the Christmas parade last Friday. It was great seeing all the, all the people out because it was full. And I know we ran out of candy about Fifth Street. And so we gotta rethink how much candy we buy in.
How much they spilled out there?
That's amazing. There were some on the street still, but it was a good time. And we appreciate everybody participating in that parade. Actually had our folks from out of town, all those R C agencies stuck around the parade. And it was raining fast down our size with all the parade like that. It's a good parade. You guys got any questions?
Do I have anything? Thank you. Law Director, council emailed a law director's report for the month of October. I know Mr. Scott Bob had asked if anybody had any questions earlier. Nobody had anything for it, we're all good. Honors report.
I do need the October items that didn't, that you couldn't have last month to be submitted or approved in the.
So you're emailed the September and October, sorry about that.
Just the October item.
Well, we had September on there the last time as well, we did at the last meeting.
They would have been.
They would have been, it would have been. Yeah, so we need to accept them both.
Thank you. I make a motion with that to gather their reports.
Second. A roll please. Andrew.
Yes.
Park raw, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Councilor emailed Sheriff's report. It was actually November, before that he had on some other things. City limits, the city chart, shift assignments, map, code enforcement, any questions for Sheriff?
What's the, uh? I do have a comment or a couple of statements.
Okay.
First and foremost, I'd like to personally invite each and every one of you to the groundbreaking next Monday at 2:00 P M. Be a big day, should be a great day. Hopefully we have great weather. It's a special day, long time coming. Number two.
Sorry, we come today.
We come today at 2:00 P M. 500 North Third Street. And the second item, as you've seen with the recent hiccup in our code enforcement position. The search is on right now and we hope to have more information coming soon to resolve that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thanks.
Pedro, you have anything else to add?
Nothing additional.
Okay, you're also emailed his monthly report. Any other questions for Mr. Pedro? Chief Drayer?
Yes, sir, sorry for missing committee, I had another meeting.
That's okay.
Questions, but yeah. Questions, I'm good, thank you.
Understood. Income tax report, council emailed the October income tax report on October 31st. Check to Pushman. Distribution of funds, payroll, holdings, business net profits, individual tax return revenue. As mentioned in the email, if you have any questions, give her an email. Tiffany, anything to add?
Well, thank you for your support for the collaborative and ordinance tonight and nothing additional.
Okay. Now go into legislation. Please slow down and don't mess this up. If I can read, we don't mess up. First reading. I will ask clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5122.
5122, an ordinance establishing the wage for addition of assistant income tax administrator slash honor clerk.
For the first read of ordinance 5122, any questions or comments? Or does 5122 run its course? I'll ask clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5322.
5322, an ordinance to appropriate funds for current expenses and other expenditures for the state of Shopkin, State of Ohio. From January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023.
For the first read of ordinance 5322, any questions or comments? Or does 5322 run its course? One more to run its course. First reading, I'll ask clerk to give the first read of ordinance 5422. 5422, an ordinance approving the addition and including certain orders as parts of various component codes of the California laws of Shopkin, Ohio declaring emergency. For the first read of ordinance 5422, any questions or comments? 5422 will run its course. Following ordinances are in the first reading and will need to be passed emergency. I'll ask clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5222.
5222, an ordinance to amend section 11 of ordinance 5022.
For the first read of ordinance 5222, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give it a second and third reading, please.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the roll. Andrews.
Yes.
Park raw, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading of ordinance 5222.
An ordinance to amend section 11 of ordinance 5022.
Any questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5222 pass? Clerk, please call the roll. Andrew.
Yes.
Park raw, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson, yes. Missler.
Yes.
Moore. Yes. Turner.
Yes.
Or does 5222 is passed? Next one. I'll ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5522. These are the ones I like. 55, transfer. For the first read of ordinance 5522, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and go directly to the third reading.
I'll second that.
Call the roll please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park raw, yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading of ordinance 5522. Transfer. Any questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5522 pass? Clerk, please call the roll. Andrew.
Yes.
Park raw, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Or does 5522 is passed? Next one, I'll ask clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5622. Appropriation. For the first read of ordinance 5622, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rule and give a second, third reading. Make a motion to suspend the rule and give it a second and third reading.
Clerk, please call the roll. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading, ordinance 5622.
Appropriation. Any questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5622 pass? Clerk, please call the roll.
Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 5622 is passed. Excellent. I'll ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5722.
In order to amend ordinance 5721 for positions of city hall custodian and utilities administrative assistant and superseding any other wage ordinance for said positions.
For the first read of ordinance 5722, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rule and go directly to the third reading.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading, ordinance 5722.
In order to amend ordinance 5721 for positions of city hall custodian and utilities administrative assistant superseding any other wage ordinance for said positions.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5722 pass? Clerk, please call the roll. Andrew.
Yes.
Park Rock, yes. Jeff, Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 5722 is passed. I'll ask the clerk to give the first reading of ordinance 5822.
In order to authorize the city of Kishak and safety service director to apply for, accept, enter into a water supplying revolving loan account on behalf of city of Kishak for planning, design, and/or construction of the water facilities and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rule and go directly to the third reading.
I'll second that.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third read of ordinance 5822.
In order to authorize the city of Kishak and safety service director to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account on behalf of the city of Kishak for planning, design, and/or construction of the water facility designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5822 pass? Clerk, please call the roll. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 5822 is passed. Clerk, we give the first read of ordinance 5922.
In order to authorize the safety service director to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative group construction of water meter replacement project between city of Kishak and the Ohio Water Development Authority and declaring an emergency.
For the first read of ordinance 5922, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rule and go directly to the third reading.
Johnson.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third read of ordinance 5922.
In order to authorize the safety service director to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative group construction of water meter replacement project between the city of Kishak and higher water development authority declaring an emergency.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 5922 pass? Clerk, please call the roll. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 5922 is passed. I'll ask the clerk to give the first read of ordinance 6022.
In order to authorize participation and ratifying prior participation, the city of Kishak and Kishak County, Ohio with Department of the Army Corps of Engineers for Design and Construction of the city of Kishak Warsaw Waterline Extension Project and authorizing the safety service director of city of Kishak and other city of Kishak officials to act on, act and on behalf of Kishak City and executing, accepting or otherwise approving all documents, agreements, instruments, or other necessary papers required by the Department of the Army to implement said participation in the project.
Questions or comments?
Make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and go right to the third.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Johnson.
For Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Hey, clerk, we'll give the third reading of ordinance 6022. In order to authorize participation and ratifying prior participation, the city of Kishak, Kishak County, Ohio with Department of Army Corps of Engineers for Design and Construction of the city of Kishak Warsaw Waterline Extension Project, authorizing the safety service director of the city of Kishak and other city of Kishak officials to act for and on behalf of the city of Kishak and executing, accepting, or otherwise approving all documents, agreements, instruments, or other necessary papers required by the Department of the Army to implement said participation in the project.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 6022 pass? Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 6022 is passed. Last one at the first reading. I'll ask clerk to give the first read of ordinance 6122.
In order to support the Kishak and collaborative Appalachian Development Grant application through the Appalachian Community Grant Program for the At Work in Appalachia Initiative to bring multiple remote slash co-working spaces to the region.
For the first read of ordinance 6122, any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule and give it a third reading.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading of ordinance 6122.
In order to support the Kishak and collaborative Appalachian Development Grant application through the Appalachian Community Grant Program for the At Work in Appalachia Initiative to bring multiple remote slash co-working spaces to the region.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 6122 pass? Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 6122 is passed. Legislation at the second reading. Do the emergency one first. I'll ask clerk to give the second reading of ordinance 4722.
In order to amend chapter 705 of the ordinances of the city of Kishak.
For the second reading of ordinance 4722, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to suspend the rules and give a third reading.
Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Clerk, please give the third reading of ordinance 4722.
In order to amend chapter 705 of the ordinances of the city of Kishak.
Questions or comments? Question is, should ordinance 4722 pass? Call the roll, please. Andrews.
Yes.
Park Rock.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.
Ordinance 4722 is passed. Around its course, I'll ask clerk to give the second read of ordinance 4822.
In order to amend chapter 1305 of the ordinances of the city of Kishak.
For the second read of ordinance 4822, any questions or comments? Ordinance 4822 will take its course. Nothing for the third reading, no resolutions. In communications, I just wish all the deer hunters good luck this week. Enjoy yourselves. Hopefully everybody lands the one that they're after. It's good for the community. Thanks. Uh, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I do agree with the mayor. Be thankful for what we have, where the city's going, and, uh, enjoy each other over the holidays as we, as we go through it. Be tolerant of each other. I just want to, uh, thank Mark's son for his work at Lake Park for the Eagle, Eagle, uh, project that...
I almost want to exercise now. You're a great clerk. It is, you can get out before the leaves cover it again. It makes for a beautiful walk and the, and the view is great. And it was two days. That was my, my holiday was a little thing of chainsawing. And he, yeah, he, we'll get him to do all the rest.
Next day, the time of our meeting, we...
We made a meeting, made a meeting December 19th, 5:30. Council meeting December 19th, 7 o'clock.
Are we gonna add a special meeting?
We don't know yet. Lanny's gotta get ahold of me. I'll, I'll be in touch. Okay? So I'll be in touch if we need a, a special meeting. I'm sure I'll get ahold of him right away. Oh, the mayor probably already has. Want to get him to say, okay. So I need a motion for the meeting to be adjourned. Call the roll, please. Andrews. Park Rock, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Missler.
Yes.
Moore, yes. Turner.
Yes.